I actually think everybody's here.
Is Denny on?
Danny here.
He is on.
Well. Chris muted already. You don't like us, or what?
I'm just, it's not that I don't like you, it's Maximus and Caius, you know.
Oh, okay.
They have different opinions about some people, so.
I'll throw them a bone.
Don't say that. They'll be begging at the computer.
Okay, I'm gonna get started. I'd like to call the public hearing on the Dora to order. And I'd like to give, if there's anybody in the public that would like to speak on this issue, clearly like to hear from you. John Elder, do you want to go ahead? You're on mute.
Sorry about that. I pressed unmute and it didn't work. I'm not sure exactly what I need to say, but other than the petition that was established is what we want to go ahead and go forward with.
And do you think you've explained enough to the public that the people who are interested in knowing understand what the Dora is?
I think my conversations with, I've had a couple of people, but actually not a lot. The conversation I've had is exactly, you know, what are the boundaries? And I maybe wanted to reiterate the boundaries start at basically Berchard Avenue and they extend down Front Street and they also extend down Art Street and Bidwell, but they extend down Front Street to State Street. The Dora also extends up Krogan to include the Teen Club, the Depot, and Chuds. As it goes up State Street, it includes the Pit Stop and Katina Bar and the Knights of Columbus. It will extend across the river to include Anthony's. And that seems, that's kind of the boundary that we've kind of established. And that really reflects a lot of what the survey that was produced, what the respondents to the survey wanted. And so that's kind of, you know, and the discussion was limiting the amount of residential areas included, which is what we wanted to do and we want, you know, and the idea being that this year, we'll see how the Dora goes and we can revisit it at the end of the year.
At the end of what year? At the end of 2020?
Yes, at the end of 2000, well, not 2020, I think 2021.
So one year from when it's approved, or when we.
Right.
Okay.
Right. And, you know, honestly, my opinion, when it's all said and done, our sanitation plan is going to be one of the big key factors in its success. Just because, you know, the idea of being able to drink outside is going to involve sanitation issues. And I think, and I think how the report, you know, the petition that's been given to us, submitted to us, has a really good grasp on the sanitation plan side of it.
Okay. Anybody else have anything they want to say? Bob Gross? You're on mute.
My apologies. No, it's several months in the making. We spoke to several downtown businesses, businesses, other places. I know myself and the mayor and several council members have had dialogues with the various constituents from around our community and kind of gathered information and then took the census of that information to put together best plan or best suited plan for the city of Fremont. In addition to several people kind of doing informal polls and surveys and gathering information from what they hear, we did that, the Survey Monkey that went out with almost 400 people that applied. And now this is part of the process. The requirement is two public meetings. And this is the first of two public meetings to give the public the opportunity to express their thoughts, good or bad, to City Council regarding the Dora. So we're in line with the process and what we're doing and gathering information. And I think, you know, there's a, I think there's a solid plan here and a solid application that while maybe not perfect in everybody's eyes, I think is maybe a good bipartisan project that, you know, where we're able to get, I think, the core of what we're looking for.
Thank you. Yes, Denny, you're on mute.
I know you mentioned the Knights of Columbus, but they do not want to be included in the Dora. They really don't have enough activities going on there or anything like that. So that's one you can scratch off the list, please.
So if you were to review the application, you would see that they're not in the application as we currently speak.
Okay, because I know he mentioned.
We took them out before we submitted it.
Yeah, Councilman Addy, I had suggested that we include the Knights in case, you know, they wanted to have the opportunity to participate and maybe.
Right.
So that was the idea.
And I appreciate that, and we can talk about that later, Chris, but yeah, they don't want to be.
Okay. Is there anybody?
Madam President?
Yes.
My name's Ralph Schern. I'm a citizen and I have just maybe a few comments and questions and maybe you guys could address those. I was unable to meet or be on the Zoom in the September 17th one, but I have since viewed that. And I just want to comment, I, so I live at 118 North Monroe, across from the Depot.
Okay.
And so listening to some of the comments from the 17th, Councilman Elder and Councilman Smith both mentioned their concerns about residential neighborhoods. I heard the discussion about Tim's up on Ohio Avenue and things like that. So I've not been able to see a map and I'm wondering if you guys have something on the website that I'm overlooking? Is there a map produced already to show this? I just heard you talking a little bit about it, so I appreciate that. But is there, is there a visual thing that we can see yet?
Yeah, they're on this, and I could double check, but on the city website, and I'll go to the city website now just to make sure.
Okay.
The Dora application is on the city website. And in the application, and the application's several pages, but in the application is the map that, the boundary map that we're discussing.
Okay, and I, yeah, I did not look there. And the hours are listed there then too, Mr. Gross?
Correct.
Okay. So I'll take a look at that then too, but I guess, so, and if you could, again, I apologize. I haven't seen, didn't look at the map, but can you explain to me? So coming up, and again, I'm nothing against the Depot. I just want to be upfront on that. I've got no vendetta against them. They're good people. Brent and Ed are great people over there. So my concern is more personal and so how does the plan include them as far as sidewalk or something like that? Because there's no sidewalks on the east side of North Monroe Street, beside the Depot zone.
Yeah, I don't know if John or Chris want to answer that, or.
No, go ahead, Bob.
All right. No, we, so there's, you're right, on the east side of Monroe, there is not a sidewalk, but there is asphalt. And so the boundary map allows for, to walk on that asphalt from, because there is sidewalk on the Krogan Street, but you're right, the Monroe side is not a sidewalk, but there is asphalt to walk on.
Is the, so is the sidewalk on the west side on my side, is that included in the map?
It is not.
No.
Okay, well, and, okay, so you answered my question on that. I thought I had another question here.
Ralph, not interrupt you, but Madam President, Bob, I found the application in my email. If I can do a screen share, I can show the map.
Okay.
If that's acceptable. So let me, let me try to do this here. People see my email?
Yeah.
Yep, okay. So Ralph, if you're able to see it, this is the part that pertains to you. Rudimentary map, and then here it is going, you know, down the hill towards downtown.
Can you slide it back up to the, to the?
Yep.
All right, so.
And so you can see the, you know, the stars there would be the Depot and Chuds. And then the, the blue dot is the recycling receptacle. And then the triangles are the signage. So the signage, which indicates the boundary limits. And then the receptacle, the required receptacles, plus you see there's like a bonus receptacle there as you would turn from Krogan onto Lynn.
Chris, if you could, are you able to use your mouse and point on there?
I believe so. Can you see my mouse?
Oh, yeah, I can. So I see the blue dot, which is, sorry, that's, so the establishment is the star.
Yep.
So I, and I can see Krogan. I can't see Monroe on there. Can you?
That's, that's right here.
So I would say that line is Monroe.
Yeah, yeah.
And where would the, where's the recycling receptacle placed then?
So the star would, I think that's the address right there. So the star would be the Depot and it looks like, again, we'll, we'll see when we actually get the receptacle there, but it looks like it's going to be pretty much right in front of the Depots.
Oh, okay.
There. Basically looking probably right across the edge.
Yeah. Okay, so I do, I appreciate that. And again, I failed to look at the application, but.
Yeah, it's okay.
I didn't want to. No. Okay, so I did, I recalled my last question. So, and again, I appreciate everybody's time. So in regards to, I'm just going to say the word loitering. So I go into the Depot, I get my Dora cup. And what kind of rules are there? I mean, can we hang out then outside until 11 o'clock? Or, and again, I heard some of the conversation about the hours and I, I get that's in the application. But, so can somebody just hang out and, or do they have to be moving, like walking from here to there?
I believe they can just hang out.
Okay. Again, I was just curious.
Ralph, I think you're supposed to leave the establishment, okay?
I'm sorry?
I think you're supposed, when you order your Dora cup, you're supposed to leave the establishment, which that's, I believe that separates the Dora cup from a regular cup. So you get your Dora and you'd go outside then.
Right, go outside, but then, but you could hang out outside and in the Dora area then, like in the, and quite honestly, what I'm looking at is, so you've got the parking lots over there. So, okay, all right, okay. All right, all right, that you answer my question.
Thank you.
I have no more. Thank you. I appreciate it.
Thanks for joining us.
Hey, could I say something?
You sure can.
Can you, Chris, can you swing over to the east side? Will that, will that go up to Tim's or is that going to stop at?
This is stopping at.
Anthony's.
All right.
Anyone else have a comment or a question?
I have a comment.
Okay.
I'd just like to make everybody aware that this is going to be, the rules, regulations that we're looking at right now, they're going to be, if we pass it, it's going to be good for a year. During that year, we can find out if maybe we don't belong, if Dora does not belong going that far out of town, out of the downtown area. You know, things can be changed then. Maybe the hours will be different. Maybe we'll want shorter hours. Maybe we'll want longer hours. But I think before anybody starts, you know, picking this too much, let's wait and see until the end of the year because we can, at the end of the year, we can make some changes. You know, that by experience, we find out that, you know, it's better to have it open longer or shorter hours. And then again, maybe Tim Freeman with his Tim's Bar will want to be included in this, although I just don't see that feasible for it to be, it's too far out for anybody to be walking with a cup of drinks in their hand. You know, that's probably a good half a mile at least. So I think, you know, before anybody gets too worked up, let's just wait the year and see what we have to change then. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
And let me, in addition to the map, as part of the application process, we have, we have to list all the properties by address and parcel number that's in the Dora district. So if the map, and you're right, I mean, we could probably move some of these dots around. But it's, you know, it's pretty detailed in the map with parcel numbers and addresses to of properties that are in versus properties that are out.
So only, only the Depot side of Monroe Street is in the Dora?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct.
So what happens if somebody goes with a Dora cup to the other side of the street? Whether it be in Monroe Street or be on some other street?
Well, that's a law enforcement issue and it depends, you know, it's like speeding, you know? You speed, if you get caught, you get caught, but you may get away with it that one time. Does that make sense?
Yes, it's just so that people are aware of the fact that you're supposed to stay within a certain.
Right, and that's where the signage issue comes in, you know, there'll be signs and things like that. And, you know, that's one of the big questions is, you know, how many people do you think are going to be wandering around? I mean, I think a lot of the businesses that want to be included in the Dora just want to have the opportunity to be able to allow their clientele to be outside on a nice night. You know, it's a nice opportunity for the downtown business to be able to circulate on special event nights. On a regular day, there may not be that many people. And we just don't know until we see it. And I think what we have is a really good outline of, and a good start to put this in place.
And we'll have maps located at each establishment that's participating in the Dora. And, you know, the establishments really want this and kind of research we found from other communities is those establishments don't want to run the risk of having it go bad or lose it. It, you know, and so they do a pretty good job of taking some responsibility and policing and helping educate their patrons to say, hey, here's what it is, here's where you can go. I think what also benefits Fremont is, by, you know, if we pass this and it goes into effect 60 days later in December, that really is a slow time to utilize the Dora, which allows probably those winter months to help educate the public of the boundary, the maps, the rules. So that way, when the weather gets nicer, you know, we have a greater likelihood of, you know, limiting some of those issues.
And the boundaries were created with the businesses who were somewhat apprehensive about the Dora and to respect their wishes. And so the boundaries that we created in terms of like going up Krogan Street and so on were in respect to those who were apprehensive about it. So I think it's a really good application for, and it's a good start for what Fremont can have.
Yes, Denny.
I'm on mute. Things I was wondering too, I would assume the police will probably be patrolling the Dora area, you know, for after hours or whatever. I mean, has the police chief been involved in this?
Yeah, yeah, we've, we've had committee meetings, his officers are aware. I think anything, you know, I don't think they're going to go out and handcuff the first guy that walks on the wrong side of the street, you know, but they'll steer people in the right direction and they'll police it. I mean, I think they understand that they, you know, they answer the public and want to keep the public safe. And, and, you know, I, you know, I'm confident that.
Well, and part of our discussion, Bob, was, you know, the hours that we, we put out there were in discussion with Chief Bliss and the police force. The desire to be consistent, to educate the public properly and not have varied hours to confuse people. I mean, all that, all that played a part.
Does anyone else have a comment or would like to speak? Okay, I think that ends the first public hearing for the Dora.
Wait a minute, I'm, I'm sorry. I was trying to hit my mute button and it wasn't working.
Oh.
So my name is Jim Posey and I am a health educator at Sandusky County Public Health. I do have a couple of questions.
Okay.
So I was a part of the last meeting back in September. And my coworker, Charlotte, had mentioned seller server training that would be required for those who are participating in the Dora. I just wanted to follow up and see if there's been any discussion either with Sandusky County Public Health or the Ohio Investigative Unit to kind of do, that those boundaries for what those restaurants or bars would have to do.
I don't know if anybody else wants, I mean.
We sort of, we at Weekly discussed it a little bit. And my understanding, talking with a lot of some bar owners, that a lot of the servers already have done the training or somebody at each establishment has already done some sort of training on that.
That's what I understand.
Right, I know we are already doing that, but we wanted this to be done in addition to either people who have worked there previously to be, have this as a refresher course and to have those new employees trained in that profession as well, so that they're aware of what is expected of them. And I just didn't, we haven't heard anything specifically, any updates since our last meeting.
So you want to incorporate this training prior to the Dora starting, is that correct?
I'm sure that would be ideal, but I probably wouldn't be one to make that decision.
I'd like to say something on that.
Okay.
Mr. Posey, on, having been formerly worked years ago behind the bar, familiar with the situation, I'm pretty sure that anybody having a liquor license, being involved in this Dora thing will have their people trained, because if those people are not trained according to the laws, they could stand to lose their license. So nobody's going to be risking losing their license and their livelihood by not informing or instructing or training their employees as to what to do with the Dora thing. I think we can rest assured on that.
Right, and I wasn't trying to insinuate that by any means, but.
But it's a good thing to mention, you know, because you've got to bring these things up. If you hadn't plotted up, nobody else would have probably thought about it.
And I know in the, in the last meeting, there was mention of bringing in the Hay Center and I didn't hear anything updated with that. I know they were very interested in being a part of the Dora. Has a decision been made?
We decided that the boundary that we've, we've created, we want to stick to those boundaries. And then wait a year to see how we, if, how it goes and if we can incorporate the Hay Center. At the moment, the Hay Center's not part of the Dora.
Okay.
And if I could say something, I think that is primary because we have expressed a commitment to not have things and have the Dora in residential neighborhoods.
Right.
Well, and the survey suggested that, that response. You know, we kind of looked at, you know, what the survey and implemented, a lot of the, a lot of the things that the survey responded to.
Okay. And that was going to be my next question. Has the survey been still available to the public to give their opinion? No, okay. And that was kind of concerning for me, because I don't really feel that the survey reflects the opinion of all citizens of Fremont, Ohio, because it was such a low number compared to the population of Fremont. I don't, I don't know if that concerns anybody else.
It was concerning to me. I thought we have 16,000 people in this community and 375 applica, or surveys aren't very many.
So then I just wondered, are the citizens of Fremont really truly informed of what the Dora is? What it entails and things like that? Because when I, because I'm also involved with the community theater as well, that's over on Dickinson Street. And when I had mentioned that to the board, no one was aware of the Dora that was being put in place. Not saying that all of them are citizens of Fremont, but they're all pretty much involved in some capacity.
I think that's part of the purpose of the public hearings and the committee hearing we did on it and having, you know, having this available online and just having, you know, ears out there.
Right, let me, you know, so as far as I'm aware of, and I've researched several other communities, we're the only community that did any type of survey whatsoever. And learning of the processes in other communities, we are also the only community that are really having four meetings, because we had a laws, rules, and ordinance meeting prior to the official first public reading of the legislation, in addition to the two public meetings. So when we talk about this survey, it wasn't required as part of the application process. It's not something that has been done in other communities. We just thought it was here. When we did the survey, we emailed it out on an email blast to people that have been on the newsletter and we put it out on social media and several people shared it. So I mean, we tried to get it in as many hands as possible. And the 385 people that helped guide it, that took the survey, I mean, did provide us with, with some direction, you know, rather, and I think more direction. I think we've had more direction on how to refine this application than, than a lot of other communities that have passed their Dora before us.
Anyone else? No? Thank you, Jim Posey, for, for attending and speaking. Thanks, everyone, for attending. I'm going to call during this meeting and we're going to proceed with the City Council meeting in about two minutes. So please rise for a moment of silent prayer and the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay. Roll call.
Wees?
Here.
Leek?
Here.
Smith?
Here.
Addie?
Here.
Oder?
Here.
Reese?
Here.
Libel?
Here.
Okay. Welcome, everyone, to City Council. Council has a copy of the minutes from the last meeting. Are there any corrections or additions to those minutes? Then they'll stand as they are. Council also has a copy of the agenda. Are there any corrections or additions to the agenda?
Yes, Madam President. Item number three.
Hold on, not Denny, we're going to wait and have it read first.
Okay. Never mind.
Thank you.
Okay. For tonight's meeting, we will have the readings of the ordinances and the resolutions. If Council has a question, please raise your hand. And I'll call on you. I'll give the public a chance to comment or ask a question as well. For the public viewers who are watching, please, if you have one to comment, please do so. So we'll start the readings now.
Second reading of an ordinance creating a designated outdoor refreshment area, Dora, and enacting regulations for the Dora.
Okay, and that constitutes a second reading of that ordinance. Next.
First reading of an ordinance to authorize the expenditure and direct the safety service director to enter into a contract with Midwest Compost Incorporated in an amount not to exceed $196,650.00 for the 2020 spit lime lagoon cleaning and declaring an emergency.
Are you there, Ken? Can't hear you. Does anybody have a comment on this?
I can comment on it.
Okay.
This is the thing that we do every year and the price has gone up on it over the years. So that's all he's asking is, is for more money to, to pay the sludge that's taken out from, from the water department wherever it is.
Madam President?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Councilwoman Reese. My phone was, I was struggling to hit the unmute button. This is in reference down to the, the water treatment plant, as Councilwoman restated. We are, this is not the water reclamation plant where Jeff Flamson is at. So we just didn't budget enough. So we're asking to increase the budget for them to be able to, to get that sludge removed and taken care of.
And I'd like to also say that's a very necessary item, and it is, it's a water building over there on, what, what's the name of that street? Front Street? Not Tiffin Street?
Correct, down, down there.
I've been to it, I've been to it. Yeah, down there. So anyhow, I would move to suspend Rule Four.
I, before you do that, I got a question.
Okay.
Mayor, what seems to, I, I had an issue with this last year. What seems to be driving the cost of this to double, almost triple each year? What, what's the drive for the extra cost? I'm, I'm not understanding that.
I, I guess you're going to have to help me understand how it's tripled the amount of costs first. I don't.
Okay, well, if we, how much this time it went up?
Well, I don't, I don't have the numbers from last time. It's not that it's gone up, it's that we just didn't budget enough. I think it's gone up a little bit slightly, but they don't remove, they, this, this isn't something that they regularly do. So just the budgeted amount that they put in for just wasn't enough.
Okay, oh, because when I looked at it, I thought, excuse me, I thought last year it was like, like doubled. And then I looked at it this year and it looked like it had doubled again and I, I didn't know what was driving the cost.
No, it's just that we're getting closer to the end of the year. So as we set our budgets, you know, at the beginning of the year, we're starting to prepare for the end of the year, winding down that we have, you know, money and, and those funds to be able to, to finish out the year.
Sure. Thank you.
Mr. Brown's letter to us, he explained the cost on it. It said, last year, the water treatment plant had actual cost for sludge hauling of approximately 20, 21,000. City anticipated higher sludge hauling costs in 2020 and budgeted 50,000. However, the department has already incurred approximately 47,000 in sludge hauling costs so far in 2020. So he did give an explanation on that. And, and the cost, I think, it's a lot of this, it's getting rid of that sludge. Who's going to take it? You know, it's like getting rid of an asbestos roof, who's going to take it?
Well, Angie, I, I understand all that, but I, my question was, you know, what, what is driving that? You know, there's got to be something, or the cost of the, the trucks, the whatever. So that, that was my question.
In my opinion, your question, the answer is, it's hard to get rid of the sludge. Who wants it?
I won't.
It, it's hard to get rid of that.
Councilman Sleek, I can, I, I don't have that answer now. I, I could.
That's okay. I just, I just threw it out while we were talking about it. Just was curious. So no, no big, no big issue other than it caught my attention because I did see the numbers.
Can we fill potholes with it?
No.
Not serious.
Angie, are you still on? Okay, Angie makes the motion to suspend Rule Four and John Elder seconds that motion. Are there any more comments on the suspension of Rule Four? Okay, roll call.
Sleek?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Addy?
Yes.
Oder?
Yes.
Reese? Reese?
Yes.
Leibl?
Yes.
Wies?
Yes.
Someone needs to make a motion to approve or to adopt.
Motion to adopt.
Second.
Angie Reese moves to adopt. Chris Leibl seconds. Are there any more questions or comments from council? Are there any comments or questions from the public? No? Okay, roll call.
Smith?
Yes.
Addy?
Yes.
Oder?
Yes.
Reese?
Yeah.
Leibl?
Yes.
Wies?
Yes.
Sleek?
Yes.
Approved. Okay, next reading, if you're ready, Stevie.
First reading of an ordinance amending appropriations within General Fund 101, Water Operating Fund 510, and declaring an emergency.
Jim, is this is where I'm on?
Yes, it is, Danny.
Yes.
Okay, Madam President, I would like to amend that ordinance.
Okay.
And if you look at.
Making a motion.
I move that we amend that ordinance.
Okay, motion to amend the ordinance. To what?
Move to, if you look at the ordinance itself, in the General Fund 101, we have the diversity inclusion, we have the employee services, which takes us to the end of the year, and all other. Now, in all other, it's, it's furniture stamps, it's other whatever. And I would like to amend that to be 10,000 instead of 6,000. They took a, a room which was IT and if anybody was up there, it was kind of a little cubbyhole type thing or a little, just to fix it up, make it presentable for the public, carpeting, things like that.
I would second that emotion, second that motion.
Okay, so Danny Addy makes a motion to amend an ordinance. This ordinance and John Elder seconds. Are there any questions or comments about this amendment?
Well, the, well, the $10,000, is that coming out of the glass then from the mental health board?
Yes.
Yes, yes.
And we can designate that money to improve the IT room?
Yes, that's what the other is for. And it doesn't mean that they're going to use $10,000, but it's another budget thing like everything else. At least it's available to them so they don't have to come back to council if they need something to get the room situated and developed.
Madam President?
Yes.
Thank you. I, to answer Councilwoman Wies's question, the, the funds will be utilized. There's equipment that needs to be purchased. There's a computer part of that. I, just so council clearly understands, there's what we call above the line and below the line. Above the line would be most of the personnel costs. Below the line would be equipment, things such as equipment, things such as training, maintenance cost and supplies and things like that. When we originally put the budget together, part of this increase is that there is a diversity, train the trainer, training the director will be going to, that cost will, the, the cost of that training is $2,000. And then the, the different, the other asked increase of the budget was, we put this budget together in a very short time. As council knows, this position was just approved. We, we had thought that we had a commitment for furniture from, from a private donor in the community. However, the equipment, just the furniture just wasn't the equipment that we thought it was. So this person needs a new office chair, possibly a desk, and the computer that we estimated originally in the budget was, as recommended from IT, the piece of computer that, the computer they were recommending was $700 more than we initially budgeted for. So that's the reason for the increase of the additional dollars, not necessarily for the, the improvements to like the structure of the room, if that makes sense. Does that, does that clarify that?
Justin, did you have a question?
That helps.
Yeah, the mayor basically answered why we're doing, I was concerned why we're using this, the diversity money to help in the IT room, but the mayor basically explained that. So I'm good. Thank you.
Okay. Roll call.
Addy?
You're not on.
Yes.
Oder?
Yes.
Reese?
Yeah.
Reese? Did she answer?
No.
Angie?
Yeah.
Leibl?
Yes.
Wies?
Yes.
Sleek?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Move to adopt.
I second.
John Elder moves to adopt. Danny Addy seconds. Are there any?
No, don't, we have to, no.
Yeah, there was no suspending.
There was no suspension.
I second.
No, I'm, I'm lost here, guys.
There was no previous motion to suspend.
Right, right.
Right.
So that was a motion not to suspend, that was a motion to amend.
Correct.
Okay, so John Elder, are you making the motion to suspend?
Yes, ma'am.
And I'll second.
Danny Addy is seconding. Okay. And do we have any comment on the motion to suspend?
Madam President?
Yes, sir.
I would ask city council to suspend Rule Four tonight, so that way we can get this, we currently do not have a budget for this department and it's important that we get this passed right away, so that way we can begin getting, entering purchase orders for the necessary items that I explained to council tonight. Thank you.
Okay. Roll call.
Oder?
Yes.
Reese?
Yes.
Leibl?
Yes.
Wies?
Yes.
Sleek?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Addy?
Yes.
I move to adopt.
I second.
Angie Reese moves to adopt. Christine Wies moves to second. Are there any questions or comments about this ordinance? Any questions or comments from the public? No? Okay, roll call.
Reese? Angie?
Yes.
Leibl?
Yes.
Wies?
Yes.
Sleek?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Addy?
Yes.
Oder?
Yes.
Approved. Okay. Next reading, if you're ready.
First reading of a resolution supporting an essential workers bill of rights.
Chris Leibl?
Yeah, Madam President, thank you. I was approached by Fremont native Monica Ramirez about proposing this resolution in support of this greater movement in, to support essential workers. We, of course, in the city have supported our essential workers, our firemen, our police paramedics with hazard pay. We've, we've led on that and props administration and all the work and, and, and for us for, you know, passing it. And, you know, we've also led on the small business grant program and we've got those things up and moving pretty quickly here. So I'm really proud that we've done that and I've invited Monica Ramirez here to, to talk about this other way that we can show support for essential workers.
Hey, Monica, if you'd like to speak?
Thank you. My name is Monica Ramirez and I am a resident of Fremont and I'm really proud to be here with all of you tonight to talk about this resolution. I'm the founder and president of a national organization called Justice for Migrant Women, which is headquartered here in Fremont. I'm also the daughter and granddaughter of migrant farm workers who moved here years ago in order to make a better life for our family and to contribute to society at large through their work. I'm here today to ask this council to support the Essential Workers Bill of Rights, which builds off the work that our organization has been doing to support our community here in Fremont, across the state of Ohio and around the country. Farm workers in Ohio are among the population that Justice for Migrant Women is serving and working alongside. In Ohio, we have 33,000 migrant farm workers in our labor force. As leaders here in this city, you know the toll that COVID-19 has taken on our workers, our families, our businesses and our communities as a whole. Our organization recognized from the outset of the COVID pandemic that farm workers would be among those who would be in need of most assistance and we quickly moved to action in order to help. Through our efforts, we were able to put together a fund to support farm workers who reported not having food to eat at the end of the day after working all day to bring food to American tables. We went to the mayor and we're really grateful to the city of Fremont and the mayor because the mayor helped us to accomplish our goal of making sure that needed resources reach the farm worker community here in the state of Ohio. We were able to disperse a million dollars worth of goods and 30,000 masks across the state to support farm workers who needed resources and who needed the PPE during this pandemic. Additionally, as a result of our advocacy efforts with the state, we were able to secure a fund of $2.7 million in support of farmers and their operations. Despite all of this, we know that the need for essential workers continues. In fact, some would say that it's even greater than before. Therefore, Justice for Migrant Women joined forces to help launch the National Essential Workers Campaign. And aside, alongside that, we launched the Essential Ohio Campaign. This effort is extremely important because we know that in addition to farm workers, there are many other workers like childcare and eldercare workers, construction workers, grocery, food production, service and delivery, drivers and many more who have really struggled throughout this pandemic. This Essential Workers Bill of Rights and the resolution that's being presented here is a show of support for those workers, many of whom who've not had the essential rights and benefits that they need despite being deemed essential workers by our government. We would be extraordinarily proud if Fremont would be one of the leaders in this effort to show its support for essential workers in our country. I'm sure that many of you know that thousands of essential workers across our country have contracted COVID. In fact, 125,000 farm workers across our country have gotten sick with COVID and thousands of workers have also died as a result of this illness because they continue to do the work that was necessary in order to keep our country running. This Essential Workers Resolution would signal support for ensuring that they're paid hazard pay, much like pay that was paid to employees here in Fremont. It would ensure that they're entitled to child, paid childcare, childcare and paid leave if they become sick. It would also signal that these workers are entitled to culturally competent healthcare if they do become ill. We know that the problems for these workers existed before the COVID pandemic and they've only been exacerbated. It's critical that we help provide these needed resources to these workers. And while this res- And while this resolution won't extend any resources per se to the workers, it will in fact show just how much we appreciate the work that these workers do every single day and how much we depend on them. And so it's with that that I ask that like the city of Toledo and the city of Lakewood, which last week adopted this resolution unanimously by their city councils, we I hope that you, this, the members of the Fremont City Council, will consider supporting the Essential Workers' Bill of Rights. We must do better for the people that are part of our community, that are keeping our economy and society operational. And if not for moral reasons than for economic reasons, we cannot survive without them. Thank you.
Thank you, Monica.
I would move to adopt.
I second.
Pardon me?
You need to suspend the rule.
Yeah, you got to suspend the rule.
I would make a motion to suspend Rule Four.
I second it.
Okay, John Elder makes a motion to suspend Rule Four. Angie Reese seconds. Any comment on the suspension of Rule Four? Roll call.
Libo.
Yes.
Wees.
Yes.
Slink.
Yes.
Smith.
No.
Addy.
No.
Elder.
Yes.
Reese.
Yeah.
Bye.
We have five.
We don't have enough.
Okay.
That just constitutes the first reading.
That will constitute the first reading of a resolution supporting the Essential Workers' Bill of Rights.
Can I make a comment?
Certainly.
I understand exactly what Monica was saying about the farmworkers. But the way the resolution is is written, it it pretty much looks like it's for all the businesses in Fremont. And I'd like to have a little more discussion with some of the business owners in town. Just a little discussion on this whole thing is is the reason I voted no.
I would agree with Mr. Addy. I would like to hear some concerns from business leaders in our community before we vote on this. We just received this this week. I believe we received it two days ago, to be honest. It has not been included in any previous council meeting. And we have supported our workers throughout this ordeal.
And I'm gonna make it, I'm gonna make a comment if you're done, Justin.
Yes.
The reason I voted yes is because she, I thought she explained it very well. Monica, I thought you did a an excellent job. And however, I would like to, I would like to have more information on it.
Keep keep in mind that we are asking to pass a resolution to recognize the work of our working people in Fremont, Ohio. We're not asking our business owners to recognize. We're asking our hardworking people of Fremont, Ohio.
That's what I told them.
There are, there are some recent statistics to show that that paying our hardworking people of Fremont, Ohio benefits everybody in our community. For example, a recent economic study is, which is winding its way through the economic world, shows that paying our nursing home employees higher wages actually increases the longevity of the residents of said nursing homes. So we're looking at, we're looking at honoring our necessary workers who kept, who are literally keeping people alive throughout this pandemic. And in the future, maybe keeping people alive whether the pandemic lasts or not. So we're, you know, I think, I think this resolution is simply asking to honor and recognize these hardworking people who A, made sure toilet paper was kept on the shelves in spite of all the harassment they received as people waiting in line for it, and our healthcare workers and others who worked tirelessly throughout this unusual year that we've had.
Thanks, Dr. Smith Elder. My, you know, my wife's a nurse and and she dutifully went to the hospital where people were going because they had COVID throughout this crisis. And, you know, healthcare workers were getting COVID at a higher rate than other workers and than the rest of the population. And I, she didn't get any bump, you know, despite the extra risk that she was taking to protect all of us when we became sick or to protect or to help our loved ones when they became sick. And so I would like to show support for, you know, healthcare workers and other people that, you know, kept the economy moving and worked to protect us throughout this ordeal.
I'm looking at it from purely the economic standpoint, and it does affect our businesses, all the business owners, because they're asking for, and it looks like maybe extra wages or recognition of some sort, and I'm going to guess it would be in wages as one of them. And that's why I do think employers are involved.
Madam President.
Yes, sir.
May I comment? I know that no questions were directed to me, but may I comment?
Absolutely.
Thanks. So, you know, I I would like to underscore that this is a resolution. It is not an ordinance that would change the law in Fremont. But the other thing that I think is important to recognize is that many of these essential workers have not ever had what they need in order to meet their own needs. And for example, farmworkers in our country are paid $20,000 a year on average, and farmworker women are paid $11,000 a year on average. I don't know many families who can survive on those kinds of wages. And when you put a crisis on top of the reality of the extreme poverty that many people are living in, it makes it even more difficult for people to be able to survive. This resolution is an opportunity for us to right wrongs that have been created by lawmakers in the past. People talk about what it's going to look like when we return to normal after this COVID crisis. And I can tell you as someone who comes from a community who's been denied rights for decades, it was never normal to deny people these rights. And it is only right to extend them, the pay and the benefits that we all expect and that we all deserve for ourselves and for our families. And by paying people appropriately for the work that they do, including keeping us fed during a crisis, that also means that we'll be able to generate more, more resources for the overall community because that means there are more resources that will be available to buy in our stores. In fact, I think it's quite the opposite than harming business leaders. I think that paying people more and giving people the benefits that they need in order to do their work well is actually helpful to the economy and to our businesses. So I would hope that as this council reconsiders this resolution upon its second reading, that we'll think about the contributions that these workers make alongside the many benefits and rights that they don't have. This resolution is an opportunity to pay homage to the workers that have continued to do the work. And so I'm happy to provide more information about the national campaign. I'm happy to provide information about some of the other work that we've done to support farmers and employers who also need resources during this COVID crisis. And I just hope that you will reconsider this resolution because it's really important.
Ms. Ramirez.
Thank you, Monica.
No disrespect intended, but there was a lot about farmworkers. If that resolution was about farmworkers, yes, I I have all agreement about that. And that's what a lot of this seemed to be based on, and I understand that completely. I've lived in this community and seen the benefit of what the farmworkers have done for this community. But unfortunately, this is all encompassing, encompassing. It involves the whole city.
It doesn't say that we are going to enforce laws to make these employers do this stuff. It essentially says we support her and her, what she's striving to do. It's like when we supported the school levy and so forth.
Madam President.
Yes, sir.
Although I don't have a vote on this, if I could just say a few words.
Sure.
Thank you. First off, good evening, Monica. Nice to see you this evening. I've had the opportunity to, as Monica stated, I've had the opportunity to work with her on a previous project. In fact, Safety Service Director Frost, myself, and the city employees were involved in that. And Safety Service Director Frost, the city employees were were wonderful. We were able to allow them to utilize the water maintenance department for storage, as Ms. Ramirez stated, for PPE, to be able to use that as a holding spot to be able to get that distributed out to folks in our community and other communities. In fact, I know that they had some additional hygiene items that Ms. Ramirez had reached out to me on, and she was looking to disperse those to even some of our local shelters here to even, I believe, some of our homeless shelters here to make sure those hygiene products were were out in the community. So her efforts and my experience in working with her, she goes far beyond what the average person would do to provide, to make sure that there there is equality and things like that in the community. I think in reference to this resolution, I am in full support of this resolution. However, I think, you know, before we get caught up on the resolution, I think we all could probably agree that this resolution is is needed and just to show the folks of our community that we do support them. And City Council, I will say this, has been pretty united on supporting efforts or resolutions to help anyone out in the community. And my experience as mayor, not only with this council, but also previous councils. For example, the resolution of the school levy, the resolution of the drug task force levy, the resolution of the mental health levy. I think, I don't, I don't think I hear any city council member stating that they don't support this tonight, Ms. Ramirez. I think, I think just the process of how it got on the agenda because of COVID and the lack of being able to communicate, communicate face to face amongst each other and things like that is what led to some phone calls because I will tell you that I was not aware that this was being placed on the agenda myself either. In fact, I received a phone call from Council President Hefford, who stated that she received a phone call from Law Director Melly. And the process of adding an item to a city council agenda would go through the council president and typically not the law director as city council president sets the agenda. And typically, the process would be anytime the administration would place an ordinance or a resolution on the agenda, we send now an explanation to city council and an email form, either my office or the auditor's office, to explain to them exactly what that agenda is. And it gives them an opportunity to call and ask questions either to the administration, the auditor, or any other official in the city. And there also gives them time to be able to talk to the public about something that that may be coming up on the agenda, whether they do that or not. I know some members do, us council members do, some don't. And that's why the agenda is set by Tuesday at 4:30 because it still allows them as council members, 48 hours, to be able to do some homework on the issue or the resolution. And I think tonight, not speaking for Councilman Addy or Smith, but I will say that I did receive calls from most of council. And they weren't against this resolution, and you did an excellent job explaining things as you usually do. However, I don't know that they have the experience, some of them, with you that I do. And I think maybe an email or an explanation prior to the council meeting tonight to all of city council and maybe even Council President Hefford on Tuesday and allow some of these questions to be asked prior to the meeting tonight. I think this, I don't think we'd be having this conversation. And I feel confident that we would have, and I can't speak for council as I don't have a vote, but I do feel confident in my experience with city council that we could have suspended the rules and got this passed tonight and voted on tonight. But I just, I just wanted to explain that to you. That way you don't think that, I don't think anyone's saying they're against it. But for the public to also understand the process of how things are added to the agenda. And again, I just want to state that I do support this resolution. I support what Ms. Ramirez has done in the community and look forward to working with her on some some other projects. But I just think the timing on this is kind of what got off to to a bad start. Council President, those are my remarks. Thank you.
Thank you.
And I would just like to add, I don't think there's any harm in having more discussion about it, to hear more about it. I've been an essential worker this whole time. My husband has as well. So I don't think there's anything wrong with talking more about it.
I'd like to make a comment, please. Okay, my parents came here as migrants also. We, I was too young, thankfully, to work at that time. But when I got to be in the first grade, we did go work in the field. While we were there picking pickles and tomatoes, the farmers would have the airplanes come and spray the field. And all we had to do was move aside, and then they would spray it. And then just wait a few minutes until it dries and we went back. No mask, no gloves, no nothing. You know, we didn't, we didn't have a place to wash our hands or anything. So this has gone on, and it has been improving with the help of people like Monica. But we still got other people that need to be helped. And those are those people that are working, like Chris's wife. They're working in the nursing homes and in the hospitals. We may not have a field to harvest here in town in the city limits. But we do have a hospital and we do have nursing homes that we have to take care of those people and make sure that they are properly taken care of. And we also have to provide them with the wages that they need to survive. Not just to survive, but let's, you know, let's face it, some of these people, how much do the nurses aides make in nursing homes? And yet they're putting out their lives to take care of our older people. And so I am very much for this. At first, I was not because I didn't understand it. It didn't come across to me. I read it and I kept reading it, and there was things in there that I thought, we can't do this. We don't live out in the country. We don't have the fields in here. We don't have this. We don't need it. Has anybody complained about not being properly given the equipment that they need, like masks or gloves or anything like that? Has anybody in the factories, Christine, you work in a factory. Have you been given the equipment to operate with this virus, you know, and make sure that you don't contact it or give it to anybody else? So yes, I understand this, and that's why I voted yes for it. And I'd be happy to vote for it, yes, the next meeting that we have because I'm sure by that time, maybe a lot of, a lot of us will understand what is going on. Thank you.
Well said.
Anyone else? I think that constitutes the first reading of that ordinance. I'm gonna move on. Thank you, Monica, for coming and thank you for speaking.
Thank you.
I think I'm gonna move on to committee reports. I'm gonna start with Angie Reese, Citizen Service Committee.
Muted, Angie.
Got it. Okay, last week, we toured the fire station on September 22. There was five council people that went through it. The other ones either couldn't make it or they had been through it. It was very informative. Chief, I'd like to thank Chief Dave Huth for taking the time out to lead us in that tour and give us some valuable information as to the fire department, the building and everything else. And the building was built in 1974, so now it's an old building. I'm planning, I'm planning on on having another tour of the police department in the October 13th. If councilmen would please notify me if they can tour it October 13th at 6 o'clock, and that is the police department.
Madam President.
Yes.
If I would, Councilwoman Reese. In all due respect, I appreciate your efforts and and getting over to attend both facilities. Kevin Frost cannot speak because his microphone is off. But I am going to ask the police chief to suspend all visits to the police department for a little while from the public due to COVID-19 coronavirus issues. And then as soon as we can have more discussion on that, I will have Safety Service Director Frost or myself will call you. Mr. Frost, with a nod, do you agree with what I'm saying? And I don't, I don't want to have any more discussion on on why tonight, but I just, I'm gonna ask to postpone that just for, just for a little while, and we'd love to be able to get everyone back over.
Okay.
Is that all, Angie?
Yes, that is all. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Jim Slick, Government and Economic Development?
Thank you, Madam President. Nothing at this time.
Okay, John Elder, Laws, Rules and Ordinances?
We had our public hearing about the DORA, and it went really well, so we have one more public hearing to, to hear. So we're on track to hopefully passing at the next meeting. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. Christine Wies, Community Partnership?
Nothing this evening. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. Danny Addy, Traffic and Utilities?
Nothing this evening, Madam President.
Chris Leibold, Finance and Labor?
Thank you, Madam President. I think most of you received and maybe had a chance to review an email from Alder Paul Graul in regards to the upcoming budget for next year. I talked with the Alder today, and tentatively, we're going to plan for a separate council or a separate, like, special meeting, committee meeting, just for the budget, like we did last year. We're, what we're looking to do, again, is to have the budget go on a first, we'll have a first reading, and then between the first and second reading is when we'll have the, the dedicated committee meeting to that. So that is all for my report. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. Justin Smith, Parks and Recreation?
Thank you, Madam President. I have nothing this evening.
Okay. Bob Gross, would you like to say a few words?
There are two things I want to bring to your attention. If you remember at the last council meeting during the economic development presentation, we discussed briefly Hayes Elementary, and that that will be going out for bid November 5th, or not, there's not a date, but just November. And I would ask council to keep in mind, at, at some point, right now, that's zoned as a conservancy or conservatory, and the zoning of that will most likely change, depending on who acquires the property. And at some point, it will come before the Planning Commission and possibly to council, and you may want to be thinking about what you would want to see in that location. We outlined in our economic development plan that we have a, a need for housing, there's a shortage of housing, and we would love to do some fill-in, and that becomes an ideal spot for residential. And so that would be my recommendation to both the mayor and council, to take a position that you would only approve some type of residential zoning there. I would hate to see it be purchased with the intent of trying to rezone it for something else, and just hypothetically saying a gas station, and then that doesn't really fit into, to the neighborhood there. So I would just put that on your radar, that, that goes up for auction in November. There could be the possibility, a few months after that, it could be approached. And if city council members and the administration took a stance now to say that they only see housing there, then it probably provides some clear direction to those possibly seeking to put bid in on that property.
I would say I'd only want to see residential.
I'm in total agreement that it needs to be only residential in that neighborhood, that is a residential area.
I agree as well.
Mr. Gross, thank you. I, I agree with everyone who has made the statement so far. And not only do I agree, but I will say that I've spoken to residents in those, in the neighborhood over there, and it's been a handful of residents, or it hadn't been a lot of residents, but the handful that I've spoken with, Council President Hefford, I believe you, you reside over in that area as well.
Yes.
And maybe by talking to some other constituents, but I, the consensus I'm getting is that those neighbors would like to also see some type of residential that would fit in that. I did make a call to Superintendent John Detweiler, as I had read something that this was going to be going out to bid to the public, and I explained to him that although I am not on city council, as mayor, I would strongly support that, that be residential to city council and recommend to city council. And my concern is that, I just want to make sure that if this is something that the city wants to take a stand on, that as city council members, maybe email or, or contact Fremont City Schools, Mr. Detweiler, or school board members individually, and, and explain your personal view on that. Mr. Melly, with you being on the line, I don't know that we could take action as the city council.
No, no, we can't, because we didn't put it on the agenda.
Oh, it's something I think that you'd have to do individually, as a city council member. But I think it's important that city council members, if they would like to see that be residential, do that, take individual action on email, and, and email the school board superintendent and the school board members, because my concern would be that if that doesn't take place, and John Doe developer from Cleveland wants to buy that land, they may not, they're, they're, they may not know that, that's the stance that the city council or the administration would take. And, and here, it'd be nice to have a developer who does purchase that land, at least know where the city stands on what they would like to see there, as city council does have the ability to determine what that zoning would be there. So I did make the phone call already, and I would encourage city council members to also make them phone calls or emails.
If I could ask a question, maybe to Bob Gross, that zoning in that, on Hayes School property, what can go there, the way it's currently zoned?
I'm not really sure. That's probably a question best left for Erica. I could, now in the next meeting, I could probably find out and look up the zoning code and find out the particulars.
I'm curious to know, because if somebody buys that with the intention of what it's currently zoned, you know, I don't know how you're going to stop them from building on it, whatever it is that qualifies in that, in that type of zoning. So the zoning should probably be changed before it goes for sale.
What's the zoning for a school?
Yeah.
And just?
I, I don't know, it's, I just glanced at the map, and it said conservatory, and which I found that unusual, is the zone for the, for the school. And either way, I know it's not residential, and now even, there's not even a school there anymore. And so we can do a little more looking and getting a few more definitions of the zoning code. I have reached out to...
I'm going to look that up, to see what qualifies in a conservatory at some point. But I think we should be informed, and I think anybody that is looking to purchase it should be informed as well.
True.
And Madam President, I will shift gears here a little bit, just one last thing. Myself and Frost, we've worked with Tucker Fredrickson on finishing the bid specs for the demo of Jackson Annex, and I think we should probably see that go out for bid in the next 10 days. And in the bid specs, we're going to keep as much of the limestone blocks as we can, and we're going to try to keep as many as the, of the bricks as we can, because I think there had been some discussion as far as repurposing those limestone blocks into some aspect of the amphitheater, and then potentially using the red bricks as some type of walking path as part of the redevelopment design in that area. So I just wanted to keep council informed on that process.
That'll be awesome, to, to be able to reuse that block and brick. Is that it, Bob?
Yeah, I'm sorry, that's it.
Okay, I have one question, and I don't know who can answer it, but I was wondering on this small business grant, how many, I saw in the newspaper, there were 23 applications. Are there still 23 applications? 25? What's the cutoff?
So the deadline was today at 4 o'clock.
Okay.
I will, I will tell you this, Nikki, Paul, and Ken Frost are vetting those applications. Obviously, there were certain qualifications and things that you had to have in place to be eligible for that. We are going through those, and then once we figure out who is eligible, then we'll figure out the process and how we're going to disperse those funds. One of the things that I'm really looking to do is not to deny anyone if we, if we, if we don't have to. So one of the things that I'm looking for is, we, we will be, well, we, we should be, and we're aware of, that we will be receiving a, another round of CARES Act funding. I've had conversation with the auditor today. We are not sure when those dollars will be dispersed to the city. So my goal is to make sure that the folks that applied, that are eligible, and that need these funding sources, that we try to include everyone and not turn anyone down that needs us. I do not want to be in a position, as an administration, where we have to have a lottery, and I just don't think it would be fair that if we had 25, and there's, they're all eligible, and we're drawing, and 20 of them get it and five don't, just because their name wasn't drawn in the lottery, that, that is not, that is not my intent. My intent's to support a small business, the folks that need this. And at worst case scenario, maybe everyone just doesn't get it right away, but they still receive the funding, and we don't eliminate anyone that was eligible that needs these, these dollars. So I just...
I was hoping that that's what you were going to say.
Well, that, thank you. That's what I'm trying to do. And even after that, if there's additional dollars that we can distribute to businesses to help them during this time, that's, that's my goal, and I know that's our goal. So with that being said, we would have to either, Mr. Melly, I'm going to speak, and if you need to correct me, then I appreciate you doing that. But I think what we would have to do is just add another ordinance, because the dollars that we already passed are 100,000. And obviously, we thought that was 5,000 for 20 businesses, but if the other dollars, if we received the other dollars, as I said, the CARE, the, the third round of CARES Act, then we would just have to bring another ordinance to you, asking you to pass that ordinance, so that way we could distribute those additional dollars to the, the other businesses. So I say that, so that way, when that does come to council, hopefully, hopefully soon, so that way we can get those additional dollars out to the businesses, you guys aren't surprised and understand what we're trying to do as an administration. So I hope that's the answer that I can give in the next week or two. But Council President, our goal is to try to fund everyone that applied that needs these dollars.
That's wonderful. Thank you.
Thank you for asking.
Anybody else have any comment? No? Then I would ask someone to make a motion to adjourn.
Do adjourn.
Second.
May I say something real quick, Madam President?
Sure.
I, I thought you might say council comments or anything, but I just wanted to say real quickly, I had the opportunity to meet our new diversity director, Shari, our Shari Miller, Shari Mullins, greatly, we, and I just want to remind you, there is going to be something, I think you've already seen it now, October 6th, out at the Neely Center, there at Terra Tech at 6:00 PM, would be more or lesser formal introduction. Am I correct, Mr. Mayor?
You are correct, Mr. Ali.
Just something, maybe a lot of you can show up for that, so October 6th, 6:00 PM, Neely Center. That's all, I'm sorry. Thank you.
That's okay. So I believe that Jim Slick made a motion to adjourn, and Chris Leibold seconded. Is that correct?
Yes.
Have a good evening, everyone.
Wies? Yes. Lee?
Yes.
Smuff?
Yes.
Addie?
Yes.
Elder?
Yes. Unmute, Angie.
I said yes.
We didn't hear you. Leibold?
Okay, meeting is adjourned.
Hi, everybody.
Thanks, everybody.
Have a good one.